I call to order this Gladstone City Council work session for May 25, 2021. It's 5:31 PM. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and public all have access to this meeting. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not a part of our agenda and is not allowed. The city upgraded its Zoom software so it allows us to easily conduct events with a simpler interface in a professional setting. There are two groups of participants. Those are panelists and attendees. Panelists are those you will see on the platform such as the elected officials, the city administrator, city attorney, and any staff or person making a presentation. Attendees are those in the audience. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. The only item to be discussed are those listed on our agenda. Tonight, our agenda is first, the Gladstone State of the Municipal Court address by pro temp judge Amy Lindgren. Second is Gladstone City Charter Discussion. And third was item number three, good governance commitment as elected officials, and this has been removed from the agenda. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley? Counselor Ripley, can you hear me? I think you're muted. I got a thumbs up on that, okay. Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, I said that awfully fast. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is the Gladstone State of the Municipal Court address. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stimple. Good evening, city council. I'm pleased to hand this over to your pro temp judge, Amy Lindgren, that would like to give you an overview of the Gladstone Municipal Court.
Okay, am I unmuted, everyone?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for letting me join your meeting. I'd like to just start out by giving you a background about myself. I've been working in Clackamas County since the start of my career. Was a deputy DA with Clackamas County until about 2013. And then after I had my kids, worked part-time for Westland Municipal Court as the prosecutor and also for Malala Municipal Court. And then I became the presiding judge for St. Helens Municipal Court. So I moved over to Columbia County. I've been there as their presiding judge and still also worked for Milwaukee, Malala, and Happy Valley. And it's been a real pleasure working for the city of Gladstone as your pro temp. I also pro temp for Canby and Woodburn, Wilsonville, Troutdale, and Fairview, when those judges are on vacation too. So I've had the pleasure of working in a lot of municipal courts and getting to know all the staff and procedures has been really helpful just in my own practices and running the court in and of itself. I don't know how many of you actually know what kind of cases we handle because some municipal courts are different. For example, I believe Fairview only handles traffic cases. Our municipal court handles both traffic and misdemeanor, which misdemeanor cases are the cases that are under a year in jail. All the felonies, of course, have to go to Circuit Court because they have to go before the grand jury. We also, of course, handle the code enforcement cases, truancy court. And I think that covers it. It has been a real pleasure to work for Gladstone. The court staff, Tony and Uvia, have been really, really amazing. They're very supportive, very enthusiastic. And I think that they really want to learn more and are kind of constantly asking me, what else can we be doing? What can we change? So it's been a real supportive environment for me, as well as Jackie too. She's been just really supportive. And it's always a little challenging to go to a new court, getting to know the procedures. So it's been a great experience. Did everyone get a chance to see my court report? I think everyone's saying yes. I don't want to go, you know, I have a tendency to go into a little bit too much detail. I like to talk too. So I'll try not to just regurgitate everything that I wrote already. But with the traffic cases, those we hold in the afternoon, for the most part, it's traffic arraignments. Not many cases go to trial, but I have had a few. When they do go to trial, they're fun because people, you know, don't really know what's happening. Your average defendant is just a normal Gladstone citizen. And I like to explain the procedure to them and how best to conduct yourself in court. And I give them a lot of leeway. Not many people are as into Law &amp; Order, the TV shows, as I am, so they don't know exactly what's happening. But, you know, I hope that most of them have had a good experience when they have had trials before me. With the first-time offenders, what the court had been doing and that I'd like to continue is a young driver improvement course for the young drivers who get speeding tickets and, you know, any kind of traffic issue. And I believe it's 18 and under, we give the young driver improvement course to. And then for other first-time offenders, we do another traffic class option, the NTSI class, and also the Legacy Manual Trauma Nurses Talk Tough class. And sometimes if I think it will be effective, I will have people write me letters about what they learned in the class in order to get the dismissal. We also have a lot of people who have repeat driving while suspended and driving uninsured convictions. And my goal with those cases is to really try to work with people to get their license back. A lot of times, they get into this debtors' prison and they just can't get their head above water. They don't even know what courts they have fines out of. And so the good thing with the municipal court is that you can spend a little bit of extra time looking up their cases and really helping them kind of figure out a plan of action of how to get their license back. It's been challenging, of course, with DMV being closed so much. I don't know if any of you have had to get their license renewed, but it is challenging getting those appointments. So it's taking a lot longer for some people to get into DMV to get their license back. But, you know, as long as I can tell they're making appointments and are following through, then I give people extra time to get their license back so that they can be compliant. What I've been doing the last couple of months is going through some of the forms, the pay agreement we've changed to be compliant. And also today, in fact, I eliminated the trials by affidavit that the court had been doing. With COVID, it made sense to be doing the trials by affidavit so that you continue the cases and there isn't a huge backlog. But by state statute, there's supposed to be a procedure in place for how it's done. And we hadn't, the court hadn't established that procedure yet. And so I also believe that it's good for people to actually come to court and face the judge and face the police officer if they want to have a trial and really go through the process. And that is pretty much all I wanted to say with the traffic court. Does anybody have any questions about traffic violations or my philosophy on those?
Counselor Garlington?
I was just wondering about the classes. What is the cost of those classes? And does the person taking the class pay for those? Or how does all of that work?
Yeah, good question. We, it is approximately $40 to $45 for the class. So if somebody has a $265 ticket, we deduct the $45 that the class would cost them from the court fee. So there's a fee to enter, to be part of the program. And so I think it's about 120 if I'm doing my math right. And that's a court fee. And then they have to pay for the cost of the class. And so it's no more than they would have had to pay otherwise, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And then we wait for, I think it's two months, to see if they've taken the class. And this all requires them to plead no contest, which is like a guilty plea. And so if they don't take the class or they get another citation or conviction during that diversion period, then the conviction goes on their record. If they're successful and they do it, then it gets dismissed. But we do have to make sure that the people aren't shopping around with their traffic classes. When you get in bigger counties like Multnomah County and City of Portland, they get, you know, they'll get a traffic class a year. And so we really have to research whether or not people are eligible for it because you want it to be fair. And obviously, you know, people aren't learning from it if they're just taking multiple classes, but they don't change their behavior. So one, the court had been doing, their practice had been if you had any convictions at all on your record, you were not eligible for the class. That is something I would like to revise so that they would be eligible for the class again if they haven't had a conviction or another class maybe within five years, within the five-year period before. So that's something to look at. Also, the old, the practice had been that the case gets dismissed as soon as they've taken the class. In St. Helens, I wait a year for the diversion period. So they have to take the class within 60 days and then we hold the ticket for a year. And then we do a record search. And if they haven't gotten any traffic violations for that year, then it gets dismissed. So just sort of different ways to approach the traffic diversions. And each court does it slightly differently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
I don't see anything.
Okay. The, I'm sure you've all heard about the ballot measure, 110 cases with the drug offenses being decriminalized. Those, we had decided to send them to justice court. We really didn't expect to get many. And I think it's best for the whole county to take one approach to it for tracking purposes in particular. And as it turns out, there's new legislation coming up that will give circuit courts exclusive jurisdiction. And so it was, as it turns out, a good decision. We had done that. And that will allow the courts to track the cases through E-courts. Municipal courts and justice courts don't have a, like a computer database that we can all access. And so, whereas circuit courts do. And so it will be better for the state really to be able to track those through the circuit court system. Truancy court obviously has been non-existent in the last year because of COVID. But if I continue, I look forward to handling those. I think it will be very important with kids getting back into school and making sure that they are actually in school. It's been tragic to see, at least for my kids, and I know our family's experiences with school has been challenging. So hopefully, a lot of kids haven't been lost in that COVID system. I can hear my family walking in the door. So if you hear any background noise, that's what it is. I then talked about areas of improvement in my report. Really, I think the issue, and it's pretty much with the criminal docket, is the clearance rate. And it's not unique at all to Gladstone. This is common in Multnomah County and Clackamas County, where when you don't hold defendants, you just can't get the cases resolved. You just have this revolving door of cases. And because the police officers aren't able to arrest a person, a defendant, take them to jail, we just can't get him physically into court. So I've been coming up with ideas and talking to the chief about how to come up with some creative solutions to at least reduce it. I don't see it ever really being solved unless they build a huge jail. But I think that if we can work with Oregon City Police Department, where a lot of our people are, and work and be flexible together, that we can accomplish at least some clearance with the cases. Also, you know, I noticed when Tony, the court clerk, Tony Hill, gave me the report for the number of cases submitted, there has been a significant decline. It didn't, doesn't seem like it's just COVID in cases being submitted, both traffic and criminal. Obviously, the court can't sustain itself if there aren't cases to process. And so, you know, there's nothing the court itself can do about it. But it is something to note that, for whatever reason, the cases are going down. And I know the chief is, chief and I have talked about that. I certainly want to be clear that I don't think a court, municipal court, is in the business of making money. It just needs to sustain itself. And it is a, it's good for the community to have a municipal court. But you also don't want the court to be a drain on the city. And so that's, you know, just something to try to be proactive about. And the other thing I've done, just an issue with courts in general and defendants, is their success at probation. You know, the, generally with criminal cases, probation is considered a privilege in lieu of jail. You know, the last thing you want to do is just throw someone in jail. You really want to try to rehabilitate them. And so you give them probation with conditions, community service, drug and alcohol treatment. And a lot of times, I'll order that they get their GED or find employment. And it's, you know, the motivation is to get people to be successful members of society. I have found that when people walk out of the court and they don't know who's following up with them, they aren't quite as successful. So if I give people in St. Helens, I give people a date to come back within like three months. And I have found that when they know they're coming back to the judge and have to answer to me again, they are more successful and they, they are more likely to complete the terms. So I have started doing that, in particular, since our dockets have been lighter. I have more time. And so then we can address matters when they don't come. Or a lot of times, they are having a hard time paying their fines. And so we bring them in and I'll offer them community service or some other alternative to fines. So that, you know, we want people to be able to put their food on their table overpaying their court fine. But so if they can find another way to successfully complete probation, you know, I'm all, I'm all ears and I like to offer alternatives. So that, I think, covers the criminal aspect of the court. Any questions on that?
I have one, one question.
Yeah.
The, the program that you're doing in St. Helens, where you bring them back for a date certain to come before the judge again, is that something that we can do here? Why aren't we doing that? And what would the, I guess, financial and staff impacts be if we did implement something like that?
I have been starting it. And it is easy to do. A lot of courts haven't done it because the court staff is good at keeping track of the cases. So they have ticklers, if you will, on the, in their Tyler system of to check up with, you know, Joe Smith's community services due this date. And so they send a letter. If they don't have it in the file, then they send a letter to show cause. The person has to come within the next month to court. So it's just a different approach. It's not necessarily a program. So it's easily implemented and I don't think it really costs anything because I'm already there. It's just you add them to the docket. And so it's really an easy thing to do.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I've done it for the last couple of months. You know, one problem has been there haven't been that many people actually pleading guilty and being put on probation because we haven't had that many cases. And so, but as they've come, as they've, as I put people on probation, I've had it. I've done it already. There was one guy today who was supposed to come back with community service done. I think he had 10 days to do in two months and he failed to appear. But, you know, you can offer it to them and then when they don't do it, they get into trouble. But if they do do it, you know, then they also get a good pat on the back from me. So, so yeah, there I've, I've started it and plan to continue it as well.
Great. Question on the clearance rates of the misdemeanor cases. Clackamas County Jail is like not available, but I'm assuming that with the risk levels loosening up a bit, is there any idea of when the jail will be more open and available for these cases?
We are unfortunately at the bottom of their, of the pecking order. They have, it's gotten better with the DUI cases. They weren't even accepting people who were being arrested for DUI. So if somebody got pulled over at midnight, you know, historically, my whole career, they get taken to the jail. They get booked, they get the breath test, and then they stay there until they're sobered up and then they leave. And now I think the police officers just have to take them home or find a ride for them. But now they are accepting the DUIs again. They are accepting domestic violence cases, misdemeanors. And I believe that they are accepting sentences. So if I impose a sentence after I've, after someone's been convicted, then they will serve the sentence. The issue is, they haven't been sentenced yet. They just won't come to court. And that's when they're not appearing. And there isn't an end in sight from what I can tell. What we have been able to do is if they are being held on other charges in Circuit Court, so oftentimes, people are being held on a theft or a stolen car case. And then they also have misdemeanor cases. So we can, we can get them then because they're in custody on Circuit Court. And if we can get the defense attorneys to go up to the jail or handle the case quickly, then we can get our case resolved before the person leaves the jail. So what I've worked on with that is, the jail has a, what do they call it, like a video meeting room? And so all the attorney, all the defense attorneys had to do was get set up with the jail. And so I, you know, got them set up, called the jail, figured out what they needed to do. And so now the defense attorneys, that our defense attorneys have the ability to have their meeting via, like an iPad. They get a private room instead of having to go to the jail themselves, have the meeting, which just takes a lot longer. And because I'm part-time and Kendry's part-time, we can do phone appearances. So as long as it's a business day, Monday through Friday, I could call in, Ms. Lundquist can call in and so can the defense attorney. And so I've really been trying to work on that with the defense attorneys and court staff to try to get that implemented. I think we will have more success with it once the jail holds more people. And so right now, they really aren't holding anybody. But it should get better as we get out of the higher risk levels.
Great. Any other questions? Counselor Hartman?
Thank you, Mayor. I know you and I spoke about this when I came, but I wanted to know if you could clarify for everyone when you say community service, that it is within our own community and who some of those partners might be?
At this point, I believe that the court uses Clackamas Community Corrections and they monitor it. And so they go to different places within the county. What I would like to do is identify nonprofits that we can use within Glad, the city of Gladstone, whether it be churches or other nonprofits. What we would need to do though is work with probably the city attorney to get an indemnification agreement that people sign so that if they get hurt while they're cleaning the windows at the church, that the city's not liable. So that's a, that's another project to work on. Wouldn't, it would be relatively easy, so I don't think it would take a lot. But just another one step, one hoop we have to go through before we actually implement that. But thank you. I will follow up with that too with Jackie to see about, talking to the city attorney about the indemnification agreement.
There's plenty of cleanup to be done on high rocks.
Oh, I'm sure. I think if you wanted to do like it at high rocks, there would have to be an organization that monitors them or like a church or Public Works to monitor them in order to do it. You know, you can't just send people out. There has to be a monitor, yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? I don't see any. So thank you very, very much. This was wonderful.
Well, you know, I actually, I'm not done yet.
Counselor Alexander's got a question, hold on.
Okay, good. And then, yeah, I had a, I had just a few wrap-up things too before we all finish. But yes, Counselor Alexander?
You're muted.
I had the pleasure of observing Judge Lindgren at our court, court one day. And I found her to be in charge of the court. Very knowledgeable, polite, clear, fair. And just think she'd make a great addition to our city. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And everyone should go watch. It's interesting.
Yeah, I, I would love to have you all. I know there are some scheduled and anytime you're just in the neighborhood grocery shopping too, if it's on a second or fourth Tuesday, just come on by. It is interesting. It's, it can be a different world, but it's fun. You know, it is, it's real-life stuff. The other things I wanted to explore that I know Milwaukee is doing right now is an amnesty program. And that is when you work with the collections agency to forgive some of the people's fines if they pay a lump sum. I know that, I think Tigard has done it before. You know, it would take some effort to reach out to people, publish it. But I think as stimulus checks come in and potentially, you know, next year's tax returns, it might be a good way to have, help people clear their massive debts, but also get some of the collections up and then actual revenue back into the court. And I really need to, you know, I haven't wanted to do too much with changing Violations Bureau and some of the forms, unless, you know, there is going to be a different judge because I don't want the staff to have to do it twice. But so if, you know, if this does become permanent, I'd love to. But I also understand if you guys want, you know, have another alternative. But that is something that I will be looking at or I expect another judge to look at in the future, just changing and making sure everything's updated. So. Any other questions? Well, thank you all. I just also wanted to give a shout out to, again, to Tony and Jackie and Uvia. They've really been great. You guys are very, very lucky to have them working for the city. So I've worked in a lot of courts and it's not always the case. So you have great staff.
Great, thank you. And so counsel knows I was planning on adding the judge's contract to our June 8 agenda, if that's all right with you guys. It's timely, it's something that we need to address now. I see, shaking heads, so, okay. Yep, I'll move forward with that, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna leave the meeting now. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye. You too.
All right. Next item is the Gladstone City Charter Discussion Staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. For this item, I'm going to hand it over to City Attorney Chad Jacob.
So I got transferred over, so I don't know if you had called on me in that interim, but since there's silence, I'm assuming you did.
Go ahead, Chad.
Good evening, everybody. Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office for the record. Before we get started, I just wanna let you all know that I've had the pleasure of working with Judge Lindgren and a couple of other jurisdictions as a prosecutor, and she's been phenomenal. So for whatever that's worth, it's been a pleasure to work with her and I think she's a great attorney and would be a great addition for the city. Moving to the topic at hand. At your goal-setting session, there was a discussion about bringing back the proposed charter from 2016 for the council to review and consider whether or not to propose the revised charter to the voters again at November's election. So as explained in the staff report, the charter that was revised in 2016 was done by a charter review commission. Some of you served on that charter review commission. And there was a substantial amount of work that was done. It was brought to the council for several discussions. And the council proposed the revised charter to the voters and for various issues, the voters rejected the proposed charter. I'll certainly leave it up to you all who have a much better take on the political issues within the city as to what the concerns were by the voters. But as I understood it, there were two main topics of controversy. One was the length of the mayoral, mayoral term and what the charter review commission had proposed was switching that from a four-year term to a two-year term. And that is found in section 25 of the proposed charter. And the other one was changes to the city administrator position, one changing that title from city administrator to city manager. And then including some of the language related to the city administrator slash city manager's duties within the charter itself as opposed to municipal code. I think one of the, the bigger controversies there was changing the process by which department heads are appointed. And so what I've done in the draft document that's before you tonight is highlighted those two sections because I thought that those were two sections that you all would definitely want to talk about. It doesn't mean that you can't talk about any of the other sections that were proposed previously, but I certainly wanted to call those two out for your consideration and discussion. If the council would like to move forward, you certainly have a couple of options as to how you want to handle this. We can, you know, talk about various provisions that you'd like to see amended and then we can go back and have our office draft those amendments based on what your discussion is tonight and then bring that back to you for future consideration at your June or July meeting. The, the key date that we need to keep in mind is that if you do want to propose this to the voters for the November election, we have to have everything wrapped up by August 13th. And so that's the key date to keep in mind. So we've got a couple of, of council meetings, a couple of months to sort of get through all this. But, you know, and, and there's no requirement that you do it for November. You could do it at a later date as well. But if November is the goal, as you stated in the, the council work session at the beginning, the goal-setting session, then August 13th is a key date to keep in mind. So with that, I'll sort of turn it back over to you all to discuss, you know, how you want to proceed. If you want to go through section by section, if you just want to ask questions about particular sections, if you just want to focus on the two highlighted sections. I certainly defer to you and it will help that discussion in, in any way I can. But I would also highly encourage everyone to take advantage of Counselor Garland being on the council because she was an integral part of the charter review commission. And last I recall, had a binder about this deck full of notes, which I'm sure she has in front of her and will be able to probably explain this a lot better than I can. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Counselor Garland.
Counselor Garland?
Well, I'll just say a couple of things really quick. I, I, I wrote something so that I didn't stumble over my words. So if everybody just could bear with me for just a few short sentences and then I just have a couple of things to add after that. And then, you know, whatever anybody wants to discuss, let's discuss it. So sometime around February 2016, I was appointed to the City of Gladstone Charter Review Advisory Committee, along with a dozen or so other people that came from various areas of the city. The only other person from that committee here tonight is Chad Jacobs from our city's attorney's office for the city. In meeting with the others at City Hall, we carefully dissected our charter line by line. We had long discussions comparing our charter to about five other small cities within Oregon. And then with the help of our legal team, we meticulously cleaned up the verbiage to reflect today's standards. We held continuous votes, votes as in, what does everybody think? Not that it was a vote. Follow me. I hope so. We ended up with a charter for consideration by the Gladstone voters for the November 2016 ballot. Unfortunately, the new charter was turned down. There was two items I feel were the downfall for our charter. One, of course, Chad touched on was the section 25, which was whether or not our mayor would be a two-year or a four-year. The, that went as a separate vote in November of 2016 because our committee literally could not decide. We were 50/50 of whether or not we would ask people for a two-year or a four-year. The charter reflected a two, the charter that we proposed reflected a two-year. However, we had a separate ballot election for a four-year. And regardless of what the charter was voted on, that one amendment for the mayor would have trumped the charter. And it, the charter went down, but the four-year for the mayor held its own with no trouble. I would suggest we stay with that and not, you know, not try and change that outcome from that again. The section was, the second was section 33. So they had a, okay, so section 33, I'm not going to go into my personal opinion or how the outcome of this verbiage was settled on, but rather let it be known that the history and failure of the 2016 charter lies within the singular section. I recommend that we simply cut and paste from our current charter section 21 and make it charter section 33 in the new charter, which is under the city administrator lines. And moving, removing the highlighted areas and by doing so, removing any concern over our city's powers. The new charter reflects many hours of conversation and thoughtful discussion-making, corrected verbiage and gender neutrality. I believe the two changes noted above plus the additions of measures 48, 49, and 50, with a consensus of this group to move this new charter forward and most importantly, a vote of the people in November of 2021, Gladstone shows active movement forward. So the reason that I, that I bring up those other three items is a couple of them were in, were on the same ballot and passed. So I believe it's important that we, that would be the kiss of death again if we didn't move those forward. So I think those need to come forward. Definitely leave the mayor's seat at four years. And then of course, this section 33 would be up for discussion. Now, I think we need to defer back to Chad to explain to us if he can, the difference between a city administrator and a city manager, because it was a big discussion. That's all.
Before Chad does that, you were mentioning sections 48, 49, and 50, which I do not have.
Right, but I do, and I will send them all to you in a handy little packet.
Because we probably should have had those for this discussion, but all right.
I can tell you really quick in a nutshell that 48 is the, the debt, the finance, shall incur no debt over a million dollars.
All right.
Can I just interject real quick? So that, that language is in the proposed charter. It's in the sections 40, 41, and 40 and 41.
Oh, okay.
We just, they were just renumbered and some of them were combined.
And then what about the two parks, 49 and 50? Those were in the same year.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we kept all those. Let me, let me look through it. Charter Review Committee.
We changed everything to gender neutral as well in this version that you have.
Yeah, I don't see a park.
Yeah, I don't see the parks one, but
No, it was in the same
The buildings and the debt are in 40 and 41 of this one. And I don't recall, I don't know if you do, Counsel Garland, was there a discussion? It seems like a, a big oversight that we wouldn't have included the parks. So I wonder if there was a discussion to take it out.
They were on the same November ballot in November of 2016. So they were not a consideration. They would have been separate anyway. So if they failed, they would have never made it. But if they passed, we didn't discuss it because they would have ended up on the charter anyway.
Gotcha. So we need the parks, but the other ones are in there.
They've passed. So yeah, those.
Yes. In the current charter, it is section 50. Measures 3505 and measures 3506. So we would need to add that to this draft that Mindy is talking about. Counselor Garland is talking about.
And could you give me a summary of what that says about the parks so that everybody knows?
It's long.
So is that the one where we don't sell parks?
These are sell the parks without voter approval.
Okay. So then we're missing 48 and 49. What are those two? I know you said that 48 is now 40 and 41, but if 50 is the parks, what would then be 48 and 49?
So 48 and 49 are the old charter provisions.
So those are just gone, deleted?
No, so, yeah, those are not included in the draft, but the same language is included within sections 40 and 41.
Okay. So we'll just have to renumber them so that they're, okay.
Yeah. So in essence, we would add a new section to bring in current section 50 into this proposed charter. And we would do that probably in section 42 and then move 42 through 47 down. So they would all be 43 through 48, if that makes sense.
All right. That makes sense. All right. Anything else on those? Chad, take it away.
So in response to Counsel Garland's question about the difference between a city manager and a city administrator, from a legal perspective, there really is none. So the way, the way the, the process works in Oregon is that home rule jurisdictions, which are jurisdictions that have a city charter, which in Oregon is all 241 cities, have the right and authority under the Oregon constitution to dictate their form of government. And they can call the administrative head of the city, whatever they want. They can call it city manager. They can call it city administrator. They can call it head honcho. It, it really doesn't matter. What matters is the language that is used in the charter or in the municipal code to define the powers and duties of those positions. Now historically, when you're talking about a city manager versus a city administrator, a city manager usually has broader authorities than a city administrator. That's not certainly the case in all situations. Matter of fact, it's not even uniform across the state, which is why I said it doesn't really matter what term you use because it really just depends on the actual language that you have in the charter or the municipal code that sets forth the powers of that position. And so, you know, for political reasons or otherwise, if you want to call a position city administrator, head honcho, city manager, you pick whatever makes the most sense for Gladstone. But the detail and the thought should really go into what powers or duties you want to include in the charter versus the municipal code.
Anything else? Counsel Garland?
All I know, it was a long, long heated discussion. And as you can see by what's highlighted versus, so really quick, I'm going to read something to you. Section 21 of our current charter says, city administrator, A, the city administrator shall be the administrative head of the government of the city. B, term, the city administrator shall be appointed for an indefinite term and may be removed at the pleasure of the council. C, powers and duties. The powers and duties of the city administrator shall be those set forth by the council. That's all we have right now versus this and this, which is what was proposed to be changed and added. So again, I say, one of the easiest things to do, in my personal opinion, is to take that section 21, make it section 33 and keep it that simple. But I'd certainly love to have the conversation and, and find out what other people think and what they've heard and you know, a lot of people had a lot of really strong opinions. So I would love to hear what those were.
I don't think anybody on the council right now was part of that discussion. I don't, Counselor Todd, maybe? 2016? Yeah, I don't remember the particulars on it. City Administrator Bets, any comments?
Yeah, if I could interject, that was just right when I started working here. And I know that the International City Managers Association got involved with this from a lobbyist's perspective. And I do agree that it is a big change in the duties. This city council in Gladstone likes to have a little bit more oversight on the city administrator and that's okay. And I guess what I would say from my opinion is that if the city in its entirety is interested in revisiting it to become a city manager, I think you gotta vet it again in the community because I do agree that it was controversial. I think that if what you're trying to accomplish is to get an updated charter approved in Gladstone, then what Counselor Garland is recommending is correct. Keep the city administrator duties the same, add the sections regarding the parks, keep the mayor's term the same because that was voted on back in 2016 and get the gender neutral language in there. But if the city does want to change the duties of the city administrator to city manager, I do think it's going to take more time to vet that properly in the community.
And if I could just add, just to piggyback on Jackie's comments, and I agree 100% with both her and Counsel Garland. But just to point out that the, the issue of the city manager versus city administrator can be resolved at a later point in time. You know, you can do a charter amendment at a subsequent point in time, as Jackie says, do more council outreach and spend more time on it. You know, so you can propose this charter and, and it's not set in stone. You have the ability and the voters have the ability to amend the charter at any time. So, you know, this is probably a simple path forward to get a new charter in place and then tinker with it as necessary for this section or any other section for that matter.
Okay. So then Counsel Garland, what you're proposing is to make it gender neutral.
Correct.
Keep the mayor four years as was voted in 2016.
Correct.
Chain, take the language from section 21 for the city administrator and replace section 33 with that language.
Correct. All highlighted areas there. Yes.
And then add in the parks section that is not in here.
Correct.
So those are the changes right now. And then as was discussed, that at a later date, if you want to change city administrator to city manager, it will take community engagement for sure. And we would not have enough time.
Right. And, and you know, the, the proof and the pudding on that is the parks amendment. That was done by a group of people that were boots on the ground and they felt strongly about getting something put together. And, you know, people need to know that that is well within their right to go after an amendment, a change, you know, anything like that. Come together and make things like that happen. What I'm asking here is the support of the council to move forward some really good work that shouldn't be just dropped. It costs a lot of money. And I, and I just think that it's really important to make those changes that you had said. And the whole of this, this is a change. If you go, if you look at our current charter against this, there are lots of little words that change it and make it really clear. So.
All right. So Counselor Alexander, how do you feel? Alright, so Councilor Alexander, how do you feel about that? Because we just do a consensus now and the goal is to have council or have staff bring it back to us in July so that we can formalize it and have them move it to the November. Councilor Alexander.
Oh, that's fine with me.
Okay, Councilor Todd.
No, I'm just, I had a quick question. I'm trying to remember, did it lose? Not pass handily, I'm trying to remember. You know, sort of was it during a regular election? Was it a, a special election? Was there, was there just not a lot of interest in it? I can't remember. I remember it being on the ballot, but I don't remember why it didn't pass. What the, you said that there was a lot of people that were very up in arms.
The November two thousand sixteen election, so it was a presidential election, so it was a pretty big election. And as to why it didn't pass, again, I'll defer to Councilor Garlington, you know, as having better in touch with the political inclinations of the city than I certainly am.
Right, I just didn't know if it was, if it lost handily or if it was fairly close.
I was trying to find that and I could not.
Okay.
But I could, I, I can find that and make sure that you guys get to see that. And I'll add it to the stuff that I was looking at in the first place.
Okay.
So that, because I wanted to hand in paperwork so that everybody could also see the other, um, the other items that would go in here, because they were on that ballot as well. It was a big, it was a big voting year for Gladstone.
Yeah, I definitely remember it being on there. I just couldn't remember the nuances to it. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So no, I'm fine. Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I agree with everything you're saying, Councilor Garlington. And I appreciate moving forward with the gender neutral language, because it's very important that we are, you know, accepting of all people. I did have questions in terms of another section that wasn't highlighted. And I, I don't know if this is up for discussion, but in the section twenty-seven, what's in our pocket for qualifications? You know, personally, you know, I, I, I personally would like to see us have a little bit more detail in there. I know some other cities, especially those, um, being a registered voter and just, you know, having some more details in that section, being a registered voter and then proposing that we add that the candidate not be convicted of a felony, I think is important to add to that section. So I just wanted to open that up for discussion and see how y'all felt about that. Because I think we could just be a little more detailed on what our qualifications are. But other than that, I think it's great. And I do have the numbers too, Councilor Garlington, if you want me to tell what they are from the filled, unexpired term. Is that what it was?
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
Do you, what, what, what do you want? The, the number numbers or?
Or the margin or how, what, yeah.
Oh, you know what? I lied. It's, uh, never mind. It was the unexpired term voting, not the actual.
I actually have them if you want them.
You have them? Okay.
Yeah, so it was, uh, the percentage was fifty-one point nine seven percent no, forty-eight point zero three yes. And the raw numbers were two thousand nine hundred and eighty-five no, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine yes. So it was relatively close.
Anyway, um, yeah, that was my only thought going through this, you know, um, matching up the two is just what everyone's thoughts were. Adding a little more detail of, you know, adding that you have to be a registered voter and, um, talking about, you know, haven't been convicted of a felony.
So, Councilor Hartman, just one point of clarification. In section twenty-seven, the language that requires someone to be an elector, a qualified elector under state law, that means the same thing as a registered voter.
Okay, it does. Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
And what about being, um, not convicted of a felony, Chad?
That is, that is currently not in there.
Is that legal to do that, to add that language?
You know, I'll, I can take a look at it, you know, there, there, you, there, you have the ability to remove certain rights when someone is a convicted felon. But there's a lot of, uh, ongoing litigation related to that throughout the country. So I can certainly take a closer look at that and let you all know.
As a follow-on to that, Chad, you can't do a background check on a candidate, correct?
Well, yes and no. There, there are some jurisdictions who do background checks on candidates, but it's a voluntary program. So, um, you know, you, you say, you have to fill out a form saying, yes, I consent to it, and then they do a background check. And, and if they don't consent to it, it's just a statement that says they did not consent to a background check. So there are ways that some jurisdictions attempt to get at that. But there are, there, to make it a little more complicated, there are some issues about how you can do the background check and what services you can use to do that. And because there are some restrictions on some of the services that are used by the police departments that prohibit it for these types of purposes. So it's, it's a little more complicated than just saying yes or no. And I, I apologize for that.
So probably a good idea to leave it off for right now, but maybe look at that in the future. Yeah, is that okay, Councilor Hartman?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought that was a strange question, yeah.
Okay, alright, Councilor Tracy.
I'm good with where we are.
Councilor Garlington.
So I just wanted to, to respond to Councilor Hartman's comment that your, the, the felony and both of those items came up in our long discussions. And, um, basically, we got the same answers then that we got now, but that felony thing was, um, something that we discussed long and hard and decided that maybe we didn't have enough to defend it, should it come up against us for any reason. So that's why that, that one didn't get, you know, didn't get on. However, comma, I have also long thought that there are three items I would like to see under qualifications as an elected official within our city. And that, to me, is one of them. That, again, would take some work by a group of people who are willing to push something like that forward. I'm not opposed to that, but I understand the hiccup in getting this particular piece of work passed to not have that in there might be, as Mayor Stimple says, the lesser of the two evils. Or the, the better, the better choice, the better forward.
Alright, so you're okay with these changes, moving up. I'm assuming you are, since you're the champion of them.
Okay, I am, but what I was hoping is if we had a meeting at the end of June, a, another work session, maybe the, the almost final came to us there, that we would have a chance to look at it one more time before it actually went to a, a vote of everybody in July. Is that asking too much? I'm sorry.
Well, we should. So you think getting it a week in advance in July before our meeting would not be enough time? Or do you want just another pass over this to have a discussion?
I would lo, I think we could, we could really use one more, just even if it was just in there. Did everybody read it? What do you think about it? Any other changes? And then if it came to us in July, then we would all have a consensus, I believe, and have had all of the conversations needed in order to, to, um, assure, if somebody came to talk to us, then we could assure them that we've had the conversations and that, that we as a group would be comfortable pushing this forward, moving this forward.
Chad.
Yeah, so, uh, absolutely no problem with doing that. And I can probably turn this, the newly revised charter language around to you, uh, super fast, so you can have it well in advance of either the June meeting or a July meeting. What I wanted to say is that we have that August thirteenth is the deadline to actually get the final proposal passed from the council. So if you wanted more time, not that you have to have it, but if you wanted more time, you could just have this as a discussion item at your July meeting.
Yeah.
Um, and then you could actually vote on it in August if you wanted to. But when we vote on it, we have to have the final language. We can't be making amendments. So you want to have a discussion, if you want to review it again and have other potential amendments, you want to do that before the August meeting, so you've got time to make those changes. And we can have the final version presented to you for placement on the ballot.
Okay, um, Councilor Ripley, how do you feel about these?
I think everything looked great. The one thing I would like to see is term limits for city council. But otherwise, I think everything else, everything else looked good.
Okay, and then I say yes on it too. So Councilor Bets, or excuse me, it's City Administrator Bets, what does our July meeting look like?
So we can, we are comfortable bringing this back for one final review July thirteenth. That means, like Chad said, August meeting, no changes. You have to approve the ballot title. Or we could bring it back to you at your special meeting on June twenty-second.
Yeah.
For the final review and you can approve the ballot title on July thirteenth. Either way, it works for us. We just want to make sure we've allowed time.
Okay, um, my take would be, well, we're, we're planning a, a second meeting in July, aren't we?
We are, we're going to have a work session in July, yes, so that's different than a meeting, a, or a special meeting.
I think we should just bring it up in the July meeting, our regular meeting. And then if we need to go for a vote in August, then we just make sure that we make the final decisions in July.
Yeah, I, I think we're comfortable with the July timeline of having one more final review with a draft of the ballot language.
Okay. Alright, well then, anything else, Chad, Jackie?
So the, the only other thing I would say to everyone is that if there are these other things that you would like to see, like term limits or, you know, putting other qualifications on, is that you can always, you don't have to have it done by initiative petition. The council can always propose that as well in the future and refer a charter amendment to the ballot. And if for some reason someone felt very passionately that they wanted to have that happen at this November election, you could do what we did in two thousand sixteen, is you could propose a new charter and simultaneous propose, simultaneously propose an amendment to that new charter. I think that complicates things a little bit, and I wouldn't necessarily recommend it if you didn't have to. If you could just move forward a non-controversial charter, that probably politically makes the most sense. But again, I will defer to you all on these political issues, um, because you're, again, uh, much more intelligent about those issues than I am.
Well, doing anything major requires a lot of community outreach. I wouldn't want to miss that piece of it, because this is the city charter. So, alright, well, that's it. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting, please.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Garlington, seconded by Councilor Hartman to adjourn the meeting. Any further discussion? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Garlington?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Hartman? Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
Councilor Alexander?
Yes.
Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, meeting adjourned at six thirty-four PM. Thank you.